All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the 1,616th Regular Meeting of the Thornton City Council. And before we begin, just like to remind everyone in the audience to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Also, if there's anyone in the audience who needs assistance in listening to or participating in the meeting who has not indicated so on the sign-up sheet, you can raise your hand and a staff member will provide assistance. Item two is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance through the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with ever-keeping justice.
Thank you. Item three is a Moment of Silence. Please join me in a Moment of Silence. Item four is the Land Acknowledgement. Mayor Potembigalo, would you please read the Land Acknowledgement this evening?
Sure. The City of Thornton respectfully acknowledges the land on which we stand as the traditional territory of the Apache, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Comanche, Kiowa, Lakota, Navajo, Pueblo, Shoshone, and Southern Ute tribes and nations who are the original stewards of this land. We honor the history, culture, and contributions, both past and present, of these indigenous nations and tribes. We pay respect to their ancestors, elders, and present-day community members, and extend our gratitude to the indigenous peoples for their ongoing care and stewardship of the land, water, and resources. We also recognize the lasting impact of colonialism, forced removals, and continued injustices that have affected indigenous communities throughout history and into the present. We also acknowledge the labor of enslaved Africans and their descendants who worked the stolen land for the colonists and who continue to disproportionately face economic oppression, racism, violence, and exploitation. May this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our responsibility to be mindful and respectful of the land, its history, and the indigenous communities who call Colorado home, and to use it to guide our policies and decision-making for the people of Thornton.
Thank you. Item five is a Role Call of the Council. Clerk, would you please call the Role of Council?
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Councilmember Acunto? Councilmember Raiella?
Here.
Mayor Potembigalo?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember Sangrin?
Councilmember Unrain?
Here.
Orms, President, Your Honor?
Thank you. Item six is Approval of the Agenda. Are there any staff changes to the agenda this evening?
I am sorry. Thank you. Sorry for the inattention for one second. There are no changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any changes from Council on the agenda? Hearing none is our motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda is read.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, clerk, please pull the Council.
Councilmember Raiella?
Yes.
Mayor Potembigalo?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item seven is Presentations. Item 7A is a Resolution conveying the City Council's gratitude and appreciation to Lori Height on her retirement from the city. Councilmember Raiella, would you please introduce this item and read it in its entirety?
I had to put the microphone on. Hello. A resolution conveying the City Council's gratitude and appreciation for Lori Height on her retirement from the city, whereas Lori Height has served the city as a regular full-time employee for 27 years in a professional and loyal manner, and whereas Lori began employment on August 27, 1996, as an intern in the Planning Department and changed from temporary to regular full-time as a Planner I on December 1, 1997. On June 1, 2000, she was reclassed as Planner II and promoted to Senior Planner on January 23, 2005, and whereas Lori received multiple distinguished service awards over the many years of service to include, but not limited to, Los Caballeros Team, the Hanson Project Implementation Team, and the City View Team, and whereas Lori received a distinguished service award in 2019 for her work on the 25 North Project Team, and whereas Lori received a distinguished service award in 2020 for her assistance on the Regional Transportation District, RTD Fast Tracks Implementation Team, and whereas Lori received an individual distinguished service award in 2024 for her outstanding job as a project manager for the Development Code Update, and whereas Lori has approached her job in a professional, skillful, and dedicated manner, and with a strong commitment to serve the community, and whereas City Council wishes to recognize Lori for the contributions she has made over the years of service to the city. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Thornton, Colorado as follows: That the City Council hereby recognizes the commitment and dedication and loyalty of Lori Height and conveys its earnest appreciation and thanks for the many contributions she made during her 27 years as employee of the city. And I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. I'll open it for discussion. Councilmember Raiella, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Sure. I've had the opportunity to work with our staff here for the last year and a half, and you know, some of you have gotten to know a little bit more than others, but I will say that like, the Planning Department and Lori has put a lot of work into many of the things we've had to do over the last year, and it's been pretty heavy lift, so I just want to say thank you for your service, and this list of accomplishments and different projects is pretty impressive, and so good luck with your next chapter, and thank you for all the service you've done for the City of Thornton.
Any other discussion from Council? I'm going to save my comments here for just a moment. Would you please pull the Council?
Mayor Potembigalo?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Raiella?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to ask Lori and her family or anyone in the audience who wants to join us, as well as Jason O'Shea, to join us in front of the dais.
So Lori, on behalf of the City Council, I just want to say congratulations. I've had the opportunity to work with you for several years and been able to see the work that you've brought to the city and have very much appreciated your perspective in all the things that you've talked with us about. You started here when you were like 12, right? So on behalf of the City Council, thank you. If everyone would give her a round of applause.
And then Lori or Jason, would you like to say a few words?
I'll say a few words, and Nick Karen wants to say a few words. So as you heard in the resolution, Lori's worked here for almost 30 years. I've had the privilege of working with her for 26 of those years, and Councilwoman Raiella and the mayor already stole a couple of my jokes and the work. It's been 27 years of this. It's the variety of workload, the intensity, the go-to. Every time we had, as engineers or planners, had a question of the code, we went to Lori, the consistency you provided for 27 years on the code, the work that you did. It's apropos tonight that we're here with Council getting ready to approve the Comprehensive Code Amendment, and we get to celebrate all your accomplishments over the last almost three decades. So congratulations, best of luck in retirement.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say Lori actually was considering retiring about two years ago, and that was just about the time we were going to start the Development Code Project, and Lori knew the ins and outs of this code so well, probably better than anybody at the city, so we were worried if Lori left. We really, really wanted to keep her on as a staff member, and so we approached her and we asked, hey, you know, would you consider delaying your retirement by a couple of years? I will say, when you want to work on a development code, it's a very complex and very difficult project, so for somebody getting ready to retire, committing to doing this is really, you know, an honor for the city that she would commit to do this. And you know, Lori did this out of her sincere devotion to the Thornton community and her sincere devotion to just wanting to see a better future for Thornton. So Lori has done a tremendous job with this code, and through her leadership and her commitment, I think we really are going to see a big impact on Thornton in the future, so I think it's a wonderful legacy that Lori has. And I just want to say that to Lori, that you know, it's really an extraordinary project to kind of come away with after an extraordinary career. And in terms of just on behalf of the planning staff, I just wanted to indicate that we're all so grateful that we were able to work with Lori and learn from her over the years, and so thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, I hear smirks over here. They know I'm going to say something. 30 years, almost 30 years is a long time. You know, I'm really grateful to the city. It's done so, so much for me, and I'm really going to miss the work. I'm going to miss the people, but you know, life's all about change, and so it's time for new adventures, so thank you.
So let's give her another round of applause. I didn't take a picture with you now.
One. Always. Thank you.
One of the great things about the city is the longevity of our staff. They work hard every day, and they stick around for a really long time because they really care about our community. So again, thank you, Lori.
Item eight is Audience Participation. This is a time for members of the community to speak on any item that is not on the agenda as a public hearing or going to be in a public hearing in the future. Pursuant to City Council rules of order and procedure, speaking time is limited to three minutes per person with a one-hour limit on this segment of the agenda. In-person speakers will be heard first, followed by remote speakers registered before the end of the in-person comment segment. Residents of the city, as indicated on the sign-up sheet, will be given preference in the order heard in each segment. Ms. Rosenbaum, is there anyone signed up to speak under Audience Participation?
Yes, Your Honor, we have 14 individuals signed up in person, and no one has signed up in line.
All right, so in just a moment, again, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak, and this segment of the agenda is limited to one hour. Please make sure that you watch the light on the podium. When it turns yellow and you hear a single beep, you'll need to wrap up your comments, and when it turns red, you'll hear multiple beeps and your time is up, and I'll have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over. When you are called, those in person, please come to the podium. Would you please call the first person?
Mark Gormley, 13715 Ash Circle.
While most of the world just goes about its ordinary busyness and tends to their ordinary lives, I cannot. If I am silent, I am complicit. I would be a coward. Caring about Palestinians is not hatred for Jews. I appeared before this body over a year and a half ago to ask for a ceasefire resolution to be passed, wishing Thornton would be on the correct side of history. That did not happen. What has happened since is the following: The phrase "a land without a people for a people without a land" has revealed itself to be a Holocaust for a people by a people who know Holocaust. But what has been inflicted on Gaza is worse than the Jewish Holocaust, because it is being telecast and advertised across the world, and no one is stopping it. Israel also attempts to erase any evidence of it by not following in any foreign or not allowing in any foreign press. Israel was a US pawn, now the US is Israel's pawn. Hatred has been given false supremacy over love, warfare over peace. But the genocide of Palestinians is really a symptom of a deeply rotten system based on racism and capitalism, given that latter formal excuse capitalism for that ages-old illness and affliction greed. It is masked by propaganda covering the evil, the lies covering the truth, and denial covering the guilt. Israelis have become depraved war criminals and serial liars in pursuit of their settler-driven imperialist Mecca. And the punchline here is, but this is not a joke, is that Israel has become Nazi Germany. Jews all over the world are less safe because of Netanyahu's actions. Beyond Israel's actions and borders, in the greater scheme, this is an indication of the end of American empire, and it is the death throes of that dying empire. And what does this have to do with City Council? I have been asked. It has everything to do with it. As the saying goes, shit runs downhill. Oligarchy trickles uncommoners. With the Trump regime in DC, we need to prepare for the onslaught of shit, because it has only just begun, and what is being perpetrated and permitted in Palestine could visit us everywhere. Finally, a quote, "When they killed my family and buried them, they did not realize they were planting seeds." Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Stephen Mathias, 2076 East 102nd Avenue.
Good evening, Council. The Code of Conduct adopted just months ago was meant as a standard for how members treat each other and the public. But on July 22, two members of this body, Councilmember Acunto and Councilmember Unrain, openly admitted they intentionally disrespected a resident during public comment. Councilmember Acunto said, "Last meeting, I turned my back during his remarks. That was my way of exercising my own free speech." Councilmember Unrain said he disengaged completely during the same remarks. Both physically turned away from the speaker while he was seated on the dais. This was not an accident. It was deliberate. In any other city role, if an employee turned their back on a member of the public willfully, they would face discipline, not for exercising free speech rights, but because professional standards require respect while working. Here in Thornton, our unelected staff operate under a Code of Conduct that includes penalties for the exact kind of conduct this Council permitted. Councilmembers have a separate Code of Conduct adopted just months ago, but when a violation is intentional, undisputed, and still met with no enforcement, that Code becomes meaningless. Symbolic policies that don't work violate the public trust, pretending to act is worse than doing nothing. I made the same point in my remarks on residency restrictions, laws that look tough but don't work. The Code of Conduct is as effective at regulating the behavior of a Councilmember, a sworn police officer, as residency restrictions are at regulating unreformed offenders, because both believe the same thing: They don't have to follow rules. This isn't an isolated lapse. Before the Code was adopted, Councilmember Acunto called people with past sex offenses "bottom-tier individuals," and in direct response to my remarks, as a survivor of abuse advocating for better sex offense laws, made biased remarks about members of the furry community speaking as an elected official. When you do that, it's not private speech. It's the government signaling certain people and viewpoints are beneath notice. If the Council won't enforce these rules when violations are admitted and intentional, the Code of Conduct isn't a standard. It's theater, and theater does nothing to protect the public trust. So I'm asking, will you at least acknowledge the violations that happened during the last meeting publicly? Even if you don't punish them, please acknowledge them. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Tom Lambo, no address provided.
Hello, I'm Tom Lambo. It's good to see everyone, good to be back in front of Thornton. I hope all are doing well. Roberta, you responded to a concern I recently had, so thank you very much. I'm here once again objecting to your land statement, which really isn't a land statement but an accusation against one group of people. Your statement is shallow, lacks perspective, and is stated to fit your political perspective. So as you look at the entire situation, we have a group of people moving from a land they occupied to a land they didn't occupy. The invading groups saw an opportunity, had a need, and advanced toward the new land to claim it as their own. The advancing group had different beliefs, traditions, customs, languages, language gods. No question, they were different than the group that was occupying the land. Those that occupied the land had three choices: Cooperate with the invaders and assimilate to their way of life, accepting their language, custom, beliefs, everything they were all about. Or they could just move on, find a new place to reside, hunt, raise their families. I think your term is forced removal. A third option is they could engage in wars, skirmishes, battles, and may the strongest, better-equipped group be victorious. Death would occur, families would be torn apart. I've always thought that the act of conflicts produced destruction which would annihilate a group. No commander of any armed forces tells those under his command to just wound the other side. It's a kill-or-be-killed situation. One can argue genocide occurred. The defining characteristic of genocide is the intent to destroy a group, not just the act of killing. Traditionally, these conflicts were fought by men. If you take out all the men on one side, you will destroy a group. Acts of war, battles, conflicts, or genocide, the intent is the same, call it how you see it, both will result in the same outcome if played out completely. All three of these options occurred, and the new group prevailed. The occupied land was conquered. After conquering the land, the new group claimed it as their own land, and to this day, they claim it for themselves. The conquering group ways, traditions, beliefs, language were the new norm and expected to be learned and followed. That basically touches the main points of what happened. You and I are not thinking the same groups. I know who you were thinking about. You have no clue of who I'm thinking about. I'm speaking about the Sioux tribe and how they did all of what I just described to tribes lived in North and South Dakota. The Dakotas are not the traditional land of the Sioux as they claim. They conquered the land and now claim the land. You before me failed to realize this way of life on this land was the way it was all the time, and because of this, I'm telling you, your statement is shallow, lacks perspective, and is politically motivated. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Eliza Namazi, Thornton.
I had really hoped to talk today about public community orchards and picking native species of flower to like, help protect native species, and these issues still remain. I still plan to talk about them later, but today I have a more urgent warning for my fellow Thorntonians. Rather than talk with Daru or I for the first time ever, certain officials will literally turn their backs. And while they finally responded to my emails, and I do want to recognize that, for the first time in two years, I might add, okay? And one even leaves their social media comments open. Good job, Toni. I respect that. Okay? This doesn't show progress. It's a calculated strategy of avoidance. They did it to me, and they can do it to the rest of you. They do not support discourse or a democratic republic. They use the petty power plays of petty people unwilling to make real change, people who care more about posing as victims and being politically correct while quietly supporting MAGA policies and hate in our community. These are the candidates who behind closed doors and in their executive committee meetings fight to have oil rigs next to our schools and against something as simple as pride. We saw their true colors at last City Council and again at a recent Rhythm and Reals event. At this point, you know my husband and others protest people who spread hate. So Councilmember Unrain, why did Officer Cushing have to remind you that being annoying is not assault? Why were you trying to arrest him during his protest again? Thank you, Officer Cushing, for doing your job and keeping my husband safe. Why can't these crooked politicians understand that if you show up politically, it is legal for anyone to protest you? More importantly, where was the police force at the other moments when you didn't call them over? When candidate Jim Byrd's supporters attempted to punch my husband, yelled at him, followed him even after his protest was done, and stole, yes, literally stole from my bag his It's weird how you protect some, but not all. I would like to remind you, my husband's protest is nonviolent and simply feigned support while saying the quiet parts you tried to hide out loud? To my fellow Thorntonians, beware these backturners. They flip-flop their party and opinions like pancakes to trick us just for our votes. It's my duty and my right to stand up here and let the public know.
Thank you very much.
We need no cake.
Would you please call the next person?
Daru Namazi, Thornton.
Hello? Hello? Perfect. Let me get comfy. So my wife told you guys a little bit about my experiences at the last Thornton event at Ward III in the park. And I wanted to expand on that a little. I guess it's partially my fault, given my small PP, my peaceful political protest, of So I showed up at the Ward III event, and I went to support patriot David Byrd. He's running for Thornton Council. I was excitedly telling everyone with a smile, "He is a candidate who will support a president that gets trans people out of the military. He is a candidate who will work with ICE to remove the bad hombres from our community." I let people know that. But Devin Byrd, his campaign, they weren't too happy with that. They threw a lot of insults at me. They called me fat, ugly, stupid, poor, smelly, and they even said some things that weren't true. One of them called me a gay boy. Another one said I belonged at a drag show, because that would be just so awful. But that's not all they did. One threatened me with violence, threatened to attack me. Luckily, to his campaign's credit, the other campaign members told the guy to go away and calm down. But that's not all. They put a camera on me, a campaign camera, followed me around everywhere, whether it was the parking lot or the bathrooms, they were within one or two feet of me. I had to go to an officer, Officer Cushing, ask him to just remind them to respect everyone's personal space, something I hear a lot about from certain shitty politicians, but I wonder if I'll hear about it today. But that's not all. At this event, at the end, can David Byrd's, Devin Byrd's wife, ask me if she could come over to where my wife was and my pig was at this event? And I said, "Of course, please, come over, have a good time." And they did. Seven or eight of his campaign came over to where my wife and my pig were sitting. And while I was talking to a stranger, a family with a young child, his campaign, Byrd's, had the audacity to take stuff from my wife and me, after they asked to come to our area to say hello to our pet that we had at this event. So I hope, David, Devin, I hope you will say something about this. I hope you will say, "Hey, this didn't happen. If your campaign members didn't threaten to attack me, didn't follow me around, didn't insult me over and over, and didn't steal stuff from me and my wife, if none of that or any of that isn't true, please correct the record." But that is true, and I'm so hopeful that some council members can say something about it.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
Got it.
I believe you left your shoes at the podium. Would you please call the next person?
Sarah Wolski, 1460 East 128th Court.
Good evening, Mayor Coleman and members of the City Council. Both my husband Dale and I would like to review three topics. The first is our statements presented at the public hearing before this government body on July 22 regarding the 2025 reenacted Development Code. Although our comments may have been specific to a project, our concerns of Chapter 18 are broadly applicable to the are broadly applicable to the city of Thornton. Please note that other resident comments that reference the same project were highlighted and shared with the City Council and the Planning Commission. The second topic is communications with Thornton residents. Through our interactions, many of us do not receive notifications of open houses, events, and public hearings, but learn of these significant dates from neighbors or friends. For a development project of particular interest to us, we have yet to receive the written notice of the public hearing before the Planning Commission on August 19, v. USPS, but became aware of it through an email sent on August 8 following our inquiries to the senior planner. We reside within the 1,500 feet of the subject site and believe timely notification is essential for meaningful public participation. The third topic is the structure of public hearings, which is important to us and most, if not all, Thornton residents. It appears that only one public hearing is held per topic, followed by a vote, sometimes within as little as 30 minutes. After attending multiple City Council and Planning Commission meetings over the past two months, we feel that formal decisions may be predetermined during updates and planning sessions with no opportunity for resident comments to influence outcomes. This was especially evident during the public hearings on the 2025 reenacted Development Code. We respectfully ask, why aren't resident comments discussed further in a follow-up meeting involving the City Council and, if applicable, Planning Commission before formal decisions are made? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Kathy Henson, Ward 1.
I'm Kathy Henson, Ward 1 resident, former Thornton City Council member, current Adams County Commissioner. I have a couple of things I want to talk about as a resident tonight. I see some things on the consent calendar that I'm very curious about. Number, a letter B in ordinance, saying that a period, a term, partial term of less than two years is now going to become part of the charter if it's put, you know, that it's not counted as a full term. I don't know why that's necessary. Also, special elections for the mayor, I personally feel are unnecessary. The residents haven't asked for that. We restored special elections for ward elections. We have a provision in the charter where the mayor pro tem serves as the acting mayor, leaving eight council members on there with equal representation for each ward, two for each ward, and at the next municipal election, then it's an open seat for people to run to serve as the mayor. So I think that we need to be transparent about the cost. I don't know if that's been publicly stated, but I would like to know what the cost of a citywide election would be for a special election for the mayor, because I know there was grave concern over that when we were discussing ward elections last year. I also have some questions, because this has been so uncharacteristic this summer. Washington Street's had a huge construction project, and I am very concerned about public safety. The temporary filling of big chunks of road that were pulled out were very shoddy and substandard. I drove over four steel plates the other day, driving northbound on Washington, south of 104th. Not one of those was marked as a bump or steel plate. All of that, I believe, is required to be noticed to the public if you're driving over a steel plate. There's been no communication or schedule about when this is going to be working, and most concern, of most concern to me was that there was a big chimney coming out of the ground near Eppinger that appeared to be venting gas, because according to one resident I spoke to, it was actually flaring one evening. So grave concerns about, this is not how Thornton normally manages construction projects, and it's been a long, hot summer with no communication and really shoddy, substandard work. I don't know why we're allowing our subcontractors to do this, because they are robbing us blind, because they are doing really shoddy work on that project, I have to tell you. I'm going to leave a couple flyers here. Putting on my county commissioner hat real quick, we're having a town hall at the Anything Huron Street location on Monday, August 26, from 6:00 to 7:30 in the evening. I've got flyers here in both English and Spanish, so I'll leave those. Ask that maybe post these at the rec centers and also, or make them available to council members to copy and/or post on their social media and share with their residents. It's open to the public, and it is specifically about community concerns. And last but not least, putting my resident hat back on, and partially speaking as elected, you know, we don't all get along, but we all deserve respect, and turning your back on people who pay your salary because you're representing them is not the way public servants are supposed to act. And I ask for more respect from my fellow residents of the city of Thornton. Thank you.
I know recently we received an email on the update of Washington. Can we get a copy of that to Commissioner Henson, please?
Yeah, thank you. That would be great, but I think the community at large needs to know. This is a huge swath of Washington affecting a lot of people, and it's been very poorly handled, I have to say.
So we'll get an update to the commissioner, and we will share some information. I believe the project, just for the public's notice, is not a city project, but a private project. But we'll try to provide some, an update both to the commissioner and to the public about who to contact in terms of the individual. The city does permit right-of-way instructions, so we do permit that work, and so we'll try to provide an update on the work that's happening and the nature of the work.
Thank you very much.
The public safety issues are really what's of concern to me.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Luis Pino, Thornton.
Estoy aquí para hacer una pregunta para todos, porque ya me cansé de oír excusas por parte de las autoridades. En la audiencia pasada me presenté para los problemas que pasan en mi comunidad. Este, no se me han dado respuestas porque dicen que como vivimos en un lote de trailas, pero nos mandan papeles, documentos federales estatales donde dice que está comprometido tanto el arrendatario como el dueño a cumplir los códigos civiles de la ciudad. Ustedes, las autoridades, me dicen que no, porque es una propiedad de viviendas de trailas. Entonces, ¿por qué nos mandan notificaciones donde dice que estamos obligados todos? Yo así como me piden una fecha estimada de pagar impuestos, de pagar un ticket, todo tiene una fecha, yo también quiero una fecha para que me digan cuándo se van a resolver este tipo de problemas, que todo mundo dice que no se puede. Les habla uno a la policía, ellos dicen que si les hablas, no acuden si ellos dicen que no es necesario. ¿Cómo es posible? Entonces, cuando nos cobran nuestros impuestos, entonces, ¿si es necesario para pagar los cheques de ustedes? Se les olvida que son funcionarios públicos. Se les ha olvidado. Yo también quiero una fecha estimada, así como me piden que yo pague un ticket, que yo pague un impuesto. Todo tiene fecha, pero a mí para una respuesta no me la han dado. La audiencia pasada les dije que había solicitado hace un año, el 13 de agosto, pedí una cita con la alcaldesa de Thornton, la estoy reesperando. El viernes pedí una con el Departamento de Policía, tampoco se me dio, y no es muy una fecha tercera. Y tengo los papeles, tengo el correo electrónico. Les entregué pruebas de todo, y nadie ha hecho nada. Ni siquiera me saben resolver. Dice, no, no, vives en casas móviles. Hay reglas. Entonces, ¿para qué nos matan documentos? Donde está diciendo, se los presenté. Yo he presentado todas las pruebas de lo que estoy diciendo. Entonces, ¿por qué nadie, porque dicen que no, que no se puede? Si no pueden aquí, díganme para ir más arriba, a decirlo, que me están diciendo que no se puede arreglar nada. Para yo, o no tienen la autoridad suficiente, o no son las personas más preparadas, discúlpenme que se los diga, para poder yo pedir más auxilio más arriba.
So she was here last public meeting. She's mostly wanting a timeline when she's going to get the resolution to her questions. She's reminding, again, that she came with the concern that she keeps getting essentially, from what she's saying, it sounds like complaints about her residency, and that she hasn't received any, I guess, sorry, spoke a lot. She hasn't received a lot, she hasn't received any sort of, what's it called, just communication as to when that's also going to get resolved. That's ultimately what she's looking for. She feels very frustrated that, at the very least, she thinks that she deserves to get some communication, when she can get a timeline. She's expressing that no one has, that she's paying taxes, so therefore, there's no time, we're quick to charge her taxes, but we're not resolving her issues. And the only excuse that she's receiving is that because of her mobile home residency that that is in a private area, that that's why there hasn't been any movement as to resolving her complaints. She's been wanting to communicate with someone higher up and says that she has evidence of communication, that she has sent emails trying to get communication specifically with you, mayor, but she hasn't received anything. And it sounds like she also came this previous Friday to submit another complaint and hasn't received any sort of, I guess, yeah, just any communication whatsoever regarding her complaints.
Thank you. I still have not received an email about that, so I need to check on what's going on there. I know that staff met with her the other week and talked, but maybe there's a follow-up that needs to happen with staff on timelines for things that we're able to accomplish. Mayor Proton, did you have something that you wanted to ask?
I just wanted to ask, I know that we're following up on this, and hopefully staff can speak with her, but can we also make sure that we let her know about opportunities for help that we have within the city?
Like COCAP?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please call the next person?
Jose Joaquín Thornton.
Mi nombre es Joaquín Inojos, y tengo problemas. llamé a la policía dos veces y no me hicieron caso. Y lo que vengo a decir es que mi vecina, mi ex, se mete a mis cuartos y me exculca todo, y luego también mi troca. Se me perdieron unos papeles y luego la llave de mi troca. Tenía cuatro llaves y nomás tengo dos. Y es todo. Gracias.
So his is more short. He's saying that he's filed two police complaints regarding his neighbor, specifically saying that there's been more or less like a home intrusion, that he's claiming that she's entered his residency. And not only that, he's had stuff missing, also with his own truck. He said that there's been paperwork that's been taken out, too, and that he's had some keys in his truck that disappeared. So that's his main complaint, that he has tried to go file a complaint with the police, and it doesn't seem like there's been a case that was evolved from that.
Can we please connect, we have an officer in the back that will talk with you now in order to address that.
Es que ya tengo 71 años y pues batallo yo para hablar bien de mis cosas personales. Y pues están abusando de mí la señora allí, y mi ex. Y pues tengo nomás dos cuartitos, no tengo cocina, no tengo dónde lavar la ropa, no tengo. Y ella abusó de mí. O sea que ella tiene todas las comodidades y pues yo quiero pelear por eso, si se puede. Ahorita no me acuerdo mucho de nada, se me olvidan las cosas. Es todo.
Necesito un oficial para que pueda hablar conmigo, porque pues no puedo yo.
No me hacen caso a mí, ya soy adulto de 71 años y tengo problemas para poder hablar bien. Es todo.
Yes, he's just saying, I'm 71 years old, and that he doesn't have a big property, he only has four rooms, he doesn't have a kitchen, stuff of that nature, and he's just really seeking help to get, he feels like he's being abused by his neighbor that's coming into his living space and just, I guess, going in and doing what she will. So I was telling him that we have an officer on standby that will speak to him. But yeah, he's just reiterating that he's an older gentleman, so it's hard for him to ask for help.
Thank you, and thank you for coming today, and the officer will help you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you please call the next person?
Elizabeth Schaaf Thornton.
I'm coming because I was told about a nuisance, and we've been dealing with a neighbor, the nuisance law, and we've been dealing with a neighbor across the street for two years Sorry, I have cognitive dysfunction. And they've made my medical worse. They've made many other neighbors, just nobody on the block really likes them. But we've been dealing with them for two years. And last night, we were told to come to the next meeting and talk about why nothing has been done with them on the continuing of, you know, with this whole nuisance law and getting them out.
Can we connect a staff member with her this evening? So we do have staff from code enforcement. It will be helpful if they can get the address and your contact information, and they'll follow up with you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Can you give us your address? Or at least the officer in the back? Maybe a street would be helpful?
Yeah.
Well, I'm the next one, so I can tell you what the address is.
Okay. I'm just going to go sit down, I'm hurt a little bit.
Yep. So let's call the next person.
Paul Schaaf, 11170 Cherry Circle.
Yep, that would be the address. All right, just getting touch base on that, this is with the nuisance thing, in a year and a half time, or maybe even two years, cops have been out to that residence over 60 times, and they keep going to court, and it keeps getting dragged on, and nobody in the neighborhood. We're afraid to go outside. We have a two-year-old granddaughter, she hardly comes over because the neighbors. They got to harass us, they got to make fun of her, they got to do whatever, and it's pretty sad that we can't even bring our two-year-old granddaughter over, because they want to just, they stalk us, they just come outside whenever we come outside to watch us, we say nothing. just come outside whenever we come outside to watch us. We say nothing, we mind our own business, and they just don't know how to, all they wanna do is drink all the time or just say whatever they want, just to get their eyes out of us. And it doesn't, all the neighbors, us, the ones across the street, the ones next to them, we're all scared to go outside because of these two individuals. And it's sad that they're, if they go to court, whether it's been Adams County, since we've been with them with Adams County, they lie about it, they lie to say that they didn't do anything. There is four kids that are less than teenagers that are in that house, and they let them do whatever. Yeah, okay, there's three kids. And they're all underage, and they just let them do whatever and just... Yeah, and then if they call the ambulance, there's been times that they're, we called the ambulance a couple, last night she fell, but then a couple weeks ago, or a couple months ago, she had to call the ambulance and said, oh, did the meth heads overdose again? It's like, we're not doing anything. She's got medical issues that are only getting worse, and it doesn't, that's why she's got the service animal, because of her balance issues. And I'm just wondering how much, how much more taxpayer money is gonna get wasted before they do something about these two and actually get them out of the neighborhood? Because we're not in HOA, so I don't know what is, why we gotta keep wasting money, cities' money and resources, just to keep going over there so they can just lie their way out of it and get out of it.
We'll connect you with a staff member this evening. Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Dale Walski, 1460 East 128th Court.
Good evening, Mayor Coleman and City Council members. The last time I was here, I believe I ruffled some feathers when I suggested that the Planning Commission was more concerned about pleasing the developers than the residents of Thornton. City Council, or Councilmember Roberta Ayella, suggested that I check out campaign contributions to see if anything shady was going on. The Planning Commission does not receive contributions, but the City Council members do. And the City Council is the body that appoints members to the Planning Commission. So I took the Councilmember Ayella's advice and checked the contributions to the City Council members. To my surprise, there were a couple Councilmembers who received large donations that stuck out like a sore thumb for reporting year 2021. I'm not going to name names, but I think they know who I'm talking about. There were three members who received a total of $63,500. And what was really strange, all three of them received it from the same 14 individuals and/or corporations. I also have gone through reporting year 2023 and have come across the same thing. Two members received a total of $51,150 from most of the same 14 individuals and/or corporations. No, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, but it just does not pass the smell test. I would hate to think that 14 people are pulling the strings in our fair city. If any of the Councilmembers would like to hear who these people and/or corporations are, I'd be happy to meet with you in private. I will continue to research and watch what happens with our city government. I'll find it disturbing. If I find anything disturbing, I will bring it to your attention. I'm sure all of you have our best interests at heart.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Delia Pacheco, Thornton.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Delia Pacheco.
Good afternoon. My name is Delia Pacheco.
Estoy aquí apoyando a mis vecinos.
I'm here supporting my neighbors that were the ones that talked earlier.
Me gustaría pedirles de todo corazón.
I would like to ask you from the bottom of my heart.
Que ustedes qué son las personas que nos protegen.
That you, as servers of the community, that protect our community.
Tengan un poco más dependiente con las personas que de verdad necesitan ayuda.
That you are more dependable for the people that need you.
En mi comunidad no son las únicas personas que pasan cosas.
In the community, we're not the only people, the only people that face issues or go through things.
No sé si ustedes podrían ayudar en saber que lo que se promete se cumpla.
I'm asking for your, how you guys can help for what you're promising, for it to come into fruition, for it to be completed.
Nos gustaría mirarlos también en nuestra comunidad para conocerlos en nuestra comunidad o nada más aquí.
And we would like for you to integrate into our communities as well, not only just seeing you here in the council chambers.
Para mirar el trabajo que ustedes hacen.
So you can also see the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
That was the last person who signed up to speak, Your Honor.
Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't know you needed to sign up? You can come to the podium now.
Greetings, City Council, Mayor. My name is Devin Byrd. I am running for Thornton's City Council Ward Three. I live at 5332 East 128th Circle. As a fellow Thornton resident and a candidate for City Council, I'm running because I love this city. I have watched, though, lately and seen the concerns and the need for change that's being brought forth. I grew up in a small town. My family was very low income, with five of us living in a 500-square-foot house. My parents worked hard, and although I didn't always agree with my father, I have now come to understand the respect and values he lived by: integrity, accountability, and community. However, after entering this race, I've encountered less-than-ideal aspects of local politics. When I filed to run, there were emails and texts that were scattered around, everybody asking, who is this guy? Who is he running? That doesn't bother me. I've worked in cybersecurity for the last decade. I've hidden behind the curtain, tracking cybercriminals, and making sure that I'm protecting people without having to show my face to do so. What I did expect, though, while what I didn't expect, though, was the dishonesty and the division that this council and the people in the city have done for politics. At recent city events, I've been harassed by a so-called protester, one who stands by my booth shouting homophobic, anti-Semitic, and violent comments while wearing my campaign logo. He runs up to residents as they're entering the events, shouting, "Vote for Byrd, he hates queers." And yet, at the same time, I have reached out to City Council, to our attorneys. I have been met back with some replies, while others did not. I had City Council members approach me at said event and say, hey, you know, what can you do about namazi? It is what it is. Meanwhile, this same City Council member's wife was sitting with his wife at the event. For City Council members to call out the turning of Tony and David's chairs, and yet encourage and support this person, is a direct line of hypocrisy. I've seen the selective outrage on social media, where candidates will call out for the same reasons, and then turn around and pretend like they don't do the same things. This is the way that it should not be. But I refuse to sit quietly
Thank you very much.
And not let the city have the transparency.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't know you needed to sign up? All right, we will move on to Item Nine, which is public hearings. And at this time, I would ask anyone in the audience intending to give testimony, including citizens who've signed up to speak, to please stand so you can be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you hereby swear or affirm that your testimony before this council will be true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief? Thank you.
Item Nine A is a public hearing concerning an ordinance amending certain sections of the Thornton City Code regarding stormwater and floodplain regulations and adopting by reference the Mile High Flood District Urban Storm Drainage Criteria Manual and other floodhazard area studies and reports. The public hearing is now open at 8:03 PM. Keith Bisby, Stormwater Coordinator, will present this item. Please make sure that you state your name, address, and whether or not you were sworn, and if not, please respond to the clerk after she gives the oath.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to see everyone again. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I'm Keith Bisby, the Stormwater Coordinator at the city, and I'll run through a high-level overview of some of the stormwater code revisions and program upgrades we're looking to implement. I'll hop right into it. Okay, so for our agenda tonight, I'll go a little into some background of stormwater management at the city, as well as some details of the stormwater code rewriting process. Then I'll get a little into exactly what these changes are, and what the desired outcomes of these changes are. And then I'll finish up with what the feedback has been so far from relevant parties and the desired outcomes from tonight. Okay, diving into a little background here, we did this in conjunction with the concurrent rewrite of Chapter 18, the Development Code, that's been happening since stormwater management is a core facet of the Development Code. So beyond updating and expanding our stormwater chapter, Chapter 22, looking to relocate a number of stormwater and floodplain provisions from Chapter 18 to Chapter 22. And on that note, a sizable amount of the red lines you'll see on the drafts, specifically in Divisions Five and Article Six of this draft, are not new. They've simply been shifted from 18 to 22. So what are the reasons why we're doing all this? For one, it organizes things properly. It simplifies and consolidates relevant sections into the correct chapter, and it also shifts technical requirements that don't belong in code into standards and specs. We currently have to defer to other departments for enforcement backing, so this streamlines that and puts it all under the Stormwater Equality Group's umbrella. And it extracts stormwater-related fees that are currently buried within development fees and reallocates them to the Correct Enterprise Fund. Okay, so here are the main high-level changes we're looking to implement. The big thing here is we're looking to introduce a stormwater quality permitting system for developments with planned disturbances of equal to or greater than one acre or under an acre in part of a larger common plan of development. As part of this new permitting process, we're looking to extract the stormwater costs that are baked into the existing development construction fee, associate those with a review and permitting fee for the stormwater quality permit, and then resaddle that money into the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Then we're looking to add some enforcement tools here that are proven to increase compliance, which include limiting the acreage of disturbance on site to 40 acres at a time with occasional variances whenever it makes sense. And then we're also looking to have the ability to issue reinspection fees and summonses for recalcitrant polluters. There we go. Here's a quick overview of the permit fees we're looking to charge. As you can see, it increases in a bracketed form as the site acreage increases. Again, these fees will largely be covered by the extracted stormwater costs that are currently baked into the development permit fee. So for the most part, it's not really costing contractors anything more than before. Then we're also looking to have a $150 administrative fee associated with annual permit renewals and any significant amendments to site plans or permit transfers to other contractors after the initial permit has been issued. The reason for a permitting fee infrastructure like this is because our group is paid out of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, and this work is performed by them. So these fees essentially recoup review and inspection costs for my staff's time. Okay, and here is a chart showing where we fall compared to other cities that charge review and permitting fees by acreage. You can see Thornton falls pretty much smack dab in the middle there. And here's an enforcement flow chart we're looking to follow. Contractors get one get-out-of-jail-free card with no fee for the first failure, but after that, continued failures result in increasing fees from 150 to 300, and then finally a stop-work order. And here's a chart showing where we fall compared to other cities that charge reinspection fees. You can see Thornton falls pretty much in the middle of the overall fiscal range there. And so just touching on stakeholder communication, I presented to the Home Builders Association on this in the spring. Is there the biggest stakeholders when it comes to these changes? And no one had any issues, questions, or comments at all. I then presented to you all on July 22, to which there were no public comments, and the first reading was approved unanimously in the same evening. Then here we are for the public hearing tonight, where hopefully it's officially adopted. Okay, and at last, that's all I have. The Stormwater Equality Group recommends the approval of this ordinance, and at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments.
Are there any questions from Council or staff at this time? All right. Is there any additional presentation before I open for public comment? All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and open for the hearing for public comment. Ms. Rosenbaum, do we have anyone signed up to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposed ordinance?
No, Your Honor.
Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak but didn't know you needed to sign up? All right, so we will go ahead and, yes, there's no further staff presentation. Any additional questions from Council before I close the public hearing? All right, the public hearing is now closed at 8:09 PM. Councilmember Russell, would you please introduce Item Nine A for second reading?
Yes, I'd like to introduce an ordinance amending certain sections of the Thornton City Code regarding stormwater and floodplain regulations and adopting by reference the Mile High Flood District Urban Storm Drainage Criteria Manual and other floodhazard area studies and reports. And I move forward its approval.
Second.
Thank you. Approval of the ordinance on second reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Russell, you have the option to go first as you made the motion.
Appreciate you cleaning things up and the presentation, so thank you.
Any additional discussion? I'll add my thanks as well. Would you please pull the Council?
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Acunto?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayella?
Yes.
Mayor Potem, big one?
Yes.
Motion passed to you, Mayor, so Your Honor.
Thank you. For clarity, I believe the next one, Councilmember Martinez, cannot participate in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Item Nine B is a public hearing on an ordinance approving a zoning amendment to amend the previously approved plan development for the Parterre subdivision, allowing the private recreation center within Planning Area 1A to be relocated south of E470 pursuant to Chapter 18 of the Thornton City Code, Parterre subdivision amendment number one. Public hearing is now open at 8:10 PM. Colin Wayab, Principal Planner, will present this item. Please state your name, address, and whether or not you were sworn, and if not, please respond to the clerk after she gives the oath.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and members of City Council. Again, my name is Colin Wayab, Principal Planner for the city. Office is located at 9500 Civic Center Drive, and I have been sworn. Item Nine B is a request to amend zoning and related documents for the Parterre Plan developments. This amendment allows for one of the two private recreation centers within the development...
Hold on just one moment. I think we have a conversation going on in the back in the room, and it makes it really hard for us to hear. If you could take the conversation out into the lobby, that would be great. Mr. Mathias? It makes it really hard for us to hear when you have a conversation in the back of the room. Thank you. All right, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this amendment allows for one of the two private recreation centers to be relocated within the developments. That current three-and-a-half-acre site would be replaced by eight single-family detached homes, as well as a two-and-a-half-acre public park. And while this amendment applies to the full 800-acre development, it primarily affects Planning Area 1A, which is located at the southeast corner of East 152nd Avenue and Holly Street. So staff and the applicant will now provide an overview of the proposal, followed by staff's analysis of the approval criteria, as well as staff's recommendation. So again, because the amendment applies to the entire development, notice was sent to residents within 1,500 feet of the area shown in yellow. Notices were also posted online and at city facilities, and the applicant fulfilled the physical signposting. the physical signposting notice on the property. This notice documentation has been submitted electronically for the official public records. This screen shows the aerial image of the same map to help provide some perspective of the surrounding areas. To the northeast is the Heritage Todd Creek Development. To the southwest is Holly Hills Estates, as well as Willow Bend. And it's not quite on the aerial, but the new 27J school site is on the northwest corner of the property. The 2020 comprehensive plan designates this area as single-family detached, or, excuse me, single-family neighborhoods, mixed residential neighborhoods, as well as a regional mixed use. Planning Area 1A, where the changes are proposed, is within the single-family neighborhoods designation, which is intended to provide areas for low-density residential development as well as recreational amenities, which is supportive of this proposal. And there will be no, excuse me. The zoning amendment updates the overall development plan as well as the planned development standards, allowing the relocation of that secondary recreation center from Planning Area 1A to a planning area south of E-470, which has not yet been determined. The ODP on the screen shows Planning Area 1A outlined in blue. It also shows the primary recreation center for Parteria as a blue star, and that location is not changing with this proposal. Staff believes the relocation improves the distribution and access to recreational facilities within the developments and for Parteria residents. This slide shows the proposed amendment to the Planning Area 1A conceptual site plan. Currently, the zoning for the area allows for up to 420 single-family residents. The amendment proposes adding eight single-family detached homes on that three-and-a-half-acre site. This increase would take the number of planned units from 391 to 399, which is still below that 420-unit maximum that was established in the zoning in 2020. The remaining two-and-a-half acres would be proposed as a public park, which would be open to all residents of Thornton. So with that, I will hand it over to the applicant, who is being represented by Brad Haig with Norris Design today.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Brad Haig. I'm principal at Norris Design, 1101 Bannock Street, Denver, Colorado, 80204, and I have been sworn. Thanks, Colin, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time this evening. I want to thank staff for their continued efforts on not just this application, but for all of the Parteria applications that we've been processing. There's been quite a few. Congrats, Lori, on retirement. Shown on this slide is the Parteria team. This team's been working on the Parteria project for many, many years, and we will be available for any questions this group may have following the presentation. What's shown in this, Colin did a good job of giving you a little of the context, but the white boundary is really what we're focused on in 1A in the upper left. When this was designed, this was an active adult product type. That builder is no longer building that product type and has changed it to more of a single-family detached standard lot type, and so there's not a need for that secondary rec center anymore in the north area. Here's a side-by-side of the two, the approved plan on the left, and then the proposed plan to add the 850 by 110 lots and the two-and-a-half-acre park that Colin mentioned. And here in the purple outline, you can see that in context, how we really like the way that park creates a destination along the Regional Trail, along the Todd Creek Greenway. Here's zooming out a little bit more, just for reiterating the context. As Colin mentioned, the blue asterisk will remain. That is our primary rec center in 2C, and the red asterisk will be moving south of E-470, and that will be in one of the planning areas to be determined. This is a little bit small on the screen, so I apologize, but this is the chart, the approved document. In the proposed document, the difference being the three acres gets put into the overall planning area, and those eight lots are allowed to be in there, and then the 2.5 acres of park integrates with that Todd Creek, and that meets our public land dedication requirements in north of parcel. The approved criteria allow for a rec center with offices, outdoor pool, flex space, kitchen, et cetera. The new proposal has a playground, nature play element, shelter, picnic tables, and open turf area. This proposal provides minimal traffic impacts, with the proposed roadway infrastructure able to satisfy those additional eight lots. And I will not go through all this in detail, but this is the criteria for a PD approval. Proposed plan development is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the applicable requirements of the zoning code. Project reflects thoughtful planning that maximizes the efficient and economical use of land and community resources. CSP approval criteria. The proposal of the eight additional lots and relocating the rec center south of E-470 aligns with the current zoning regulations. The conceptual site plan fully complies with all applicable uses, development, and design standards outlined in the municipal code. Part of the requirement was to have a neighborhood meeting. We did that at Horizon High School on January 23rd. With approximately 40 neighbors in attendance, the vast majority of the comments focused on Highway 7 improvements and ongoing construction along Quebec, which are not related to this application. Additional feedback addressed active construction along Parteria and in the surrounding area with suggestions for mitigation negative impacts on any residents. In summary, we're looking to move the private rec center clubhouse to the south. We think it's more centrally located and provides one on the north and one on the south. The two-and-a-half-acre park will be activated along Todd Creek and make for a great destination for residents. And the proposal of the additional lots within the 420 units allowed in the Parteria 1A. With that, I'll turn it back over to Colin.
Thank you, Brad. And Brad covered a lot of this information in his presentation. What I would like to add for public input is that since the public notices went out, staff has received several calls and emails. Primarily, those were for clarification on what the proposal was requesting, although no objections have been made at this point. Staff noted no appreciable impacts to city services within the water supply, financial, police and fire service, and traffic evaluations. These reference evaluations can be found in attachments one through five of the communication. And going through this criteria one more time, and again, as identified in the council communication, the proposed PD zoning amendments and associated plans meet all of the approval criteria outlined in Section 1842 of the code. It supports public health and efficient land use by repurposing a former recreation site as a park and adding eight homes. The proposal aligns with the city's comprehensive plan, supporting diverse housing, high-quality neighborhood design, community amenities, and strong neighborhood connections, and the amendment preserves the unique and innovative design of the original Parteria PD. The proposed PD amendment also meets the criteria in Section 1841 of the code for a zoning classification change. Staff believes the proposal responds to ongoing growth in the area and aligns with the current development patterns. Additionally, adequate utilities, roads, and public services are already in place to serve the changes proposed. And lastly, the proposed conceptual site plan meets all city approval criteria outlined in Section 1843 of the code. It is consistent with proposed zoning upon approval of the proposed zoning amendments, and ultimately, the proposal increases compatibility with the existing development by more evenly distributing recreation facilities, increasing the number of single-family units available, and expanding publicly accessible park space. So with that, staff recommends that council approves the zoning amendments and associated PD standards and overall development plan conceptual site plan. With that, staff is available for any questions related to city process and city regulations, and of course, the applicants here with their team for any specific project-related questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council at this time? Councilmember Unrain?
Not sure who to direct this at, but a few questions. Currently, we show that by the one map, there are two recreation facilities, and we want to move one of them from the south area over to the, or the north area, over to the south area. And the item we talk about, approved items, we talk about offices, outdoor pool, flex space. Which, which area, is that going to still remain, or is that going to be eliminated when we move rec centers? I, I don't get the distinction of where those items are going.
Let me try and go back. Can I go to the presentation? Go back to the presentation. I think a map will help us. That one right there.
That one right there.
Perfect. So you are correct, there is two proposed, there are currently two in this north, and one of those in the red is going to move to the south, and one of those planning areas south of 470.
Where does the pool go? Is it going to stay on the north side, or is it moving to the south side?
So there will be two rec center facilities, private rec center facilities, one where the blue asterisk is, that's in 2C. That remains as our primary clubhouse, private facility. The red asterisk will move to the south and be integrated in that community and have some sort of amenity. I'm not sure, pool, probably rec center amenities.
So if I'm a resident and I want to use the pool, do I have to drive across the highway to use it?
There's still the one with the blue asterisk that will remain. That's happening still.
That'll remain.
And there'll be one in the south, so they won't have to drive to the north. So there's one on each side for all the residents to have close proximity.
Okay, so you have the fewer population driving north to use the pool, and, and okay, that helps me out quite a bit. Have we, uh... Do we have any residents that are in Parteria currently right now that maybe purchase this under the assumption about these two rec centers being where they're at?
So we do have residents at Parteria. It's more close to the blue asterisk. None of the development north of the Todd Creek has been developed, so no, there's no lots for sale, there's no construction happening over there at this time. There might be earthwork, but no actually construction and sales happening north of Todd Creek.
So nobody will be disappointed if they move in currently right now?
Correct.
Okay. But other than just the big question that comes out, why?
When the active adult community went away, there was really going to be a secondary clubhouse just servicing the active adult population in one, in A1, 1A. So when that went away, we didn't feel like it was right to have two rec centers on the north side and none on the south. So having one on the north and south with coordinating with staff made a lot of sense from a proximity and people being able to get to their rec centers easily. And it also provided a park, so gave a park at the destination of Todd Creek Regional Trail, which I think is another benefit to that 1A parcel.
A lot of questions that I didn't pick up in there in the presentation that just I had to ask. Thanks very much.
Any additional questions from council? All right, is there any? Councilmember Russell, bye.
Yes, so, understanding that you're in the earlier stages of this buildout, with the highway separating the two communities, do you have any information on alternative ways to connect them? Because, as you did mention, the comments from the community were regarding Quebec Street, understanding that's not part of this hearing, but what do you have to present to us, if anything at all at this time, that would show alternative ways to connect the two communities? Is there trails or anything that would help with residents reaching both rec centers, essentially?
I will attempt to take this one. We have regional trails throughout Parteria. Connectivity and pedestrian connectivity and bike connectivity is important. So we do have regional trails that run along Todd Creek that connect throughout into the north and the south.
Any other questions from council? Any additional presentation before I open for public comment? Just a moment. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing for public comments. Ms. Rosenbaum, do we have anyone signed up to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposed ordinance?
Yes, Your Honor, no one has signed up in support, and two individuals have signed up in opposition.
All right, so in just a moment, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Make sure that you watch the light on the podium. When it turns yellow and you hear a single beep, you'll need to wrap up your comments. When it turns red and you hear multiple beeps, your time is up, and I'll have to interrupt you as your three minutes are over. When you are called, those in person, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and whether or not you were sworn for the record. Would you please call the first person?
Sean Novosad, 6781 Arbor Boulevard.
Good evening, I was sworn. Actually, thank you.
And you have to state your name and address.
Sean Novosad, 6741 Arbor Boulevard, east.
Thank you.
Parteria. Yeah, I just want to say thank you for clarifying that, because I was under the assumption, looking at the notice, that it was the other star that was being moved and not the red star. So I was actually pleased to learn that it's not the one that we were assigned, because we just moved into that residence, and I thought they were moving that rec center. Yeah, that was it. I was just wondering. Thank you for clarifying that. I was concerned, so.
Thank you. Would you please call the next person?
Luz Panado, Thornton. We just have, she has three questions regarding the presentation.
And for the record, can she state her name, address, and whether or not she was sworn in? If she wasn't sworn, we can get her sworn in. So you state your name and address? And then if you look at the clerk and raise your right hand, she'll get you sworn in.
Do you hereby swear or affirm? That your testimony before this council will be true and accurate to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Porque necesitamos un parque cuando hay más necesidades en nuestra comunidad, número uno. Número dos, cuántas personas tuvieron que, cuántas personas fueron las que votaron para que se hiciera el parque? Porque yo tengo aquí 21 años, 22 años, y nunca se me, yo nunca he recibido un papel donde diga que va a haber una audiencia para escoger eso.
Okay, so she has three questions total. The first question is... Why do we need another park when there's other necessities in the community? And the second question is, how many votes is needed or has been counted for, for this, for this project to take place when there's, again, there's, for approval and because there's other needs in the community? So she's wondering what, what the logistics are for the voting in that sense.
Not the third one?
And she's also saying... And she's also saying, why hasn't there been any sort of announcement that there is going to be a new park? That, that, that communication wasn't widely known in her residency or just at the greater large that she was not aware that this was something that was undergoing? And she's just saying, the last time I was here, I was presenting the same issues. That the reason I came was to bring these concerns to, to you guys and saying that there's much more needs in the community than, than a park, basically.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't know you needed to sign up? All right, I think the questions that were asked by the public seem to be more of a logistics on how public hearings might work. If we can do a quick 30-second overview to help the translator be able to explain, but I think further conversation outside of this public hearing might be helpful for the resident as well. I don't know if the staff member wants to talk about just basics, public hearing, this project is unique and different and the park is not something paid for by the city, but is part of the development?
Yes, absolutely. So as, as the development proposes several parks, not just the one discussed today, as well as roadways, it is paid for by the developer. For the parks, that is also an item that the HOA and Metro District would maintain over time as well.
Thank you. And we might need to have a staff member kind of explain the public hearing process to the resident so that she understands it outside of the public hearing, not at this moment. All right, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for public comment. Are there any additional questions from the council? All right, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed at 8:34 PM. Councilmember Unrain, would you please introduce item 9B?
I'd like to introduce an ordinance approving an amendment to the Planning Development Zoning and Overall Development Plan, conceptual site plan for the Parterre subdivision pursuant to chapter 18 of the Thornton City Code, allowing the relocation of the private recreation center within Planning Area 1A to the south of E470 Parterre subdivision, amendment number one. And I would submit it and ask for its approval.
Second. Thank you. Approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Unrain, you have the option to go first as you make the motion.
Thank you. My, my questions have been answered during the presentation. I appreciate that. And I look forward to that development moving forward and nearing completion. Thank you very much.
Any additional discussion? My thanks as well. Would you please call the council?
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Acunto?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Potembegalo?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passed, your name, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item 10 is council comments and communications. We'll start with Ward 1 this evening. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Coleman. I just want to start out by apologizing to everybody there for not being there in person. I was tested positive for COVID a couple of days ago and even though I'm feeling better, I'm still testing positive. So out of, you know, the spirit of public safety and not wanting to spread COVID, I am participating remotely. So it has been a while since we have convened as a council and a lot has happened. And I'm sure many of my colleagues will fill in on what I missed, but I wanted to give an update on the National Night Out event last Tuesday. I want to thank all the police officers, the city of Thornton that participated in this and the leadership team that helped plan and execute such a dynamic and challenging event to organize. And I particularly want to thank and recognize all the community leaders who have organized and hosted the event. I think it was an amazing success and I was honored to participate in. I think National Night Out is a great concept and I truly support our police department's efforts to build a stronger bond with the members of our community. And I think that was accomplished in part at National Night Out. And I'd love to see more events throughout the year that the police department participates in. I know we do a lot and I just can't stress how important it is and how valued this is among the members of our community. So thank you all who participated in that. And I also want to call out that I attended the Family Justice Center Steering Committee meeting remotely yesterday. And there's some good news on that front, that the, the Family Justice Center is, is moving towards becoming a reality. Hopefully sooner than later. We've got a spot picked out in the Pete Mireles Human Services Building in Westminster. And it looks like it's going to be a great start, which will offer us collaborative services across agencies to help victims of violence in Adams County. And I'm really looking forward to Thornton's role in that, in that whole process. So thank you. Thank you, Tanzi, for participating in that meeting and, and getting up to speed. It was great to see Thornton City staff involved as well as former chief, Terrence Gordon, also at that meeting. And then I also, the last thing I want to do is provide a, just a reminder to everybody that the Ward 1 meeting is coming up on August 14th. This is this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Thornton Community Center at 2211 Eppinger Boulevard, down at the, in original Thornton. So I really look forward to seeing all the Ward 1 residents. I mean, everybody from Thornton's welcome, of course. And we'll be discussing all the important issues and updates that we have for the Ward 1 community. So yeah, if you want to know what's going on at Ward 1 or meet your neighbors, come on down. I'll be there. I know Councilmember Salazar will be there. And we'd be happy to talk about all things Ward 1. And that's it for my update.
Councilmember Salazar?
Good evening. I would like to thank Steven Mathias for speaking this evening. And I would also like to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to the Thornton Police Department for their swift and professional response to the fire in our Niver Creek open space last night. As many of us know, with the extremely dry conditions we've been experiencing, a small fire can turn into a serious threat very quickly. The quick thinking and actions of the officers involved prevented a potentially dangerous situation from escalating. I want to thank them for their dedication to keeping our community safe and I urge all residents to be very extra cautious and aware of the fire danger. Thank you.
Councilmember Ayala?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Lieutenant White for taking me around a national night out to the events in Ward 2. The Maker Properties hosted some wonderful celebrations for the kids. They had backpacks for kids to start out the school year, hot dogs, burgers, snow cones, cotton candy. It was pretty, it was a pretty lit event. And they had some water slides, too. So it was a good example of community connection with the police and firefighters coming out to offer their support and build the partnerships in our community with our neighbors. So just wanted to thank Lieutenant White for helping out with that, with me specifically. I also want to give a huge shout out to Tashco for putting on the first ever Dino Fest for our city. The Torosaurus find was such an amazing gift to Thornton many years ago. In our fossil ridge public safety center, there was a dinosaur fossil down there. Some folks, most folks know about that. That's why we have Tiny the Torosaurus as our mascot. So about six years ago, in a brainstorming session with then-President Mary Welsh and Tashco, I brought up the kind of quirky idea of having a Dino Fest. And that was just kind of a dream back then, but over the years, I've tried to kind of keep it alive. And before I left Tashco to come to city council and be sworn into city council, I was just like, please, please, somebody do the Dino Fest. And I was super excited to see that it actually got done this year. So I think it's easy to have a quirky idea, but it's far more impressive when our community comes together to make it a reality. Dino Fest was planned perfectly alongside the back-to-school events. And so there were a ton of activities. There were story times, fossil digging, goodie bags, free books and games. And of course, Tiny the dinosaur was there, the Torosaurus, to greet kids and take pictures. And I just think it was a great example of community collaboration because the majority of that work is done by our community members, our board members on Tashco. So I just want to give them a ton of praise tonight because that's a lot of work. I've, I've done it before, but that event was very well attended. One of the best-attended Tashco events I think I've ever seen as far as it being like the first event. So good work on that. I also want to give an update on the issue I've been working on behind the scenes, the mobile home community in Pine Lakes Ranch. As a leader who believes in full transparency, I want to share that I've been working to have a presentation to council on how code enforcement will work if it were implemented in Pine Lakes Ranch. So I've brought this up before, but Pine Lakes Ranch is a private piece of property. And so my questions are important to make sure that there's fairness in planning for our city staff and for the residents of Thornton in Pine Lakes Ranch and in other mobile home parks as well. So some of the questions I has, have is if we begin enforcing code in Pine Lakes, which is private property, will we then be enforcing in all of our mobile home parks? Will we have enough code cap funding to help everyone who might need assistance? Because my estimations would say that most folks who might need assistance with fixing their mobile home due to some sort of code compliance issue, it could get very costly for the residents who may be needing assistance and we may not have enough funding to cover all that, plus the other things that we need to assist people with throughout the city. And in addition to that, will we need code staff, like more code staff to start the enforcement in a privately owned park? So these are some of the questions I've brought up. And I've talked with our city manager to have a presentation to council so we can chat further as a council in a, a planning session preferably. I believe we have to have a clear equitable plan for the residents involved in this situation. I want to be clear that when folks are out of compliance with code, it doesn't make them bad people. Often, financial burdens make it difficult for people to fix the issues. Then they'll also have to pay fines. So any approach you must take needs to be, needs to recognize the realities and be grounded in fairness, compassion, and practical support. Another thing I wanted to bring up tonight is about a month ago, when I was in Chicago, I attended a class through Local Progress around mutual aid. And that really got me thinking about how we, as a community, solve problems. As a city council member, I see people come to council with passion for making things better. Sometimes, government can step in with solutions. Other times, nonprofits or charities help out as well. But mutual aid offers a powerful path, one rooted in direct action, solidarity, and community connection. And basically, what that means is mutual aid, it means that neighbors support neighbors, not because someone has more or somebody else has less, but because we all have needs and we all have something to give. It's about building trust, acting together, and taking ownership of the well-being of our community. Here in Thornton, I've seen mutual aid in action. When eggs or other food items go up in price, I've watched neighbors buy in bulk and then share and trade with each other for eggs, for meat, or butter, or vegetables. No one is keeping score. No one is doing it for recognition. It's about making sure everyone is taken care of. With elections coming up, I want to offer this. Leadership matters. There are those who lead with humility, collaboration, and focus on solution, and those who lead with negative, negativity, arrogance, or division. And there are other pitfalls to be aware of, and those include saviorism. Saviorism is when leadership happens with an elected official, positions themselves as the sole rescuer of a community, making decisions for people instead of with them. I've seen examples where leaders organize their neighbors to come to city council meetings upset about specific issues, but the solutions they push for can have unintended consequences and sometimes the solutions they're looking for aren't even possible. In those cases, saviorism can leave people feeling used, unheard, and disempowered. I want to be a different kind of leader, one who empowers people to find solutions they need and do it with humility and gratitude for what we can offer each other as human beings in the city we all call home. Because the future of Thornton is built not just by elected officials, but by all of us working together. And before I close tonight, I want to say best of luck to one of my students. She might be listening tonight. And I think I've inspired some nerdy civil action with some of my students. So she might be listening tonight. And I'm just really impressed with how she's advocated for herself and is moving into a new program. She likes to watch these meetings and so I just wish her the very best in the next chapter of her life. Thank you.
Councilmember Unrain?
Thank you. Last Tuesday night, we did the National Night Out and I was, my host was Commander Dudley. I'd like to thank him very much. All of the public safety people that went around to the neighborhoods and met the neighborhoods. I had the opportunity to meet an adult community two times and then we went to neighborhoods that had children. And the, as I say, the staff was 100% willing to engage and be very friendly with the community. And I did find one firefighter that met the challenge. And when the kids asked him if he was going to jump in a pool, he went right ahead. Because we really realized that water is a firefighter's best friend. So that's really all I have to say tonight. Thanks very much.
Councilmember Acunto?
I think everybody had everything covered. Thank you to Thornton Public Safety for National Night Out. I participated in my own National Night Out last week. It's always one of my favorite events of the year. And I just want to make it very clear, I will never, ever apologize for standing up with what I believe in. So you just have to deal with it.
Councilmember Russell?
Thank you. So over the past few weeks, I've had the privilege connecting with the community over a variety of ways. We attended the annual business appreciation event for Adams County, where I had the opportunity to network with local business leaders and celebrate the contributions they make to our regional economy. Earlier this month, as mentioned, we helped celebrate National Night Out by hosting a neighborhood gathering at my house with my wife Nicole and my daughter Malia. Can't leave her out. It was a great joy to see the neighbors come together, strengthen relationships, build trust, enjoy good food, conversation, and first responders. And the firefighters were the biggest hit. Just points for them. Also, we took advantage of the Thornton Tree Branch and Organics drop-off day. It's a great reminder of how important it is to make use of the city programs that help our community well-kept, participated in it before, and I really appreciate this program personally. Additionally, we also had some fun at Dino Fest. It was wonderful to see so many families enjoying the activities, learning together. So thank you to our staff in Tashco for what was an awesome event. And finally, I want to take a moment to recognize and thank Ellis and Associates, Thornton Certification Company, and our incredible Parks and Recreation team for their dedication to lifeguard training and safety. I bring this up because on June 7th, there were lifesaving actions of an off-duty Thornton lifeguard, Emma Farina, made possible by her extensive training preparation and access to city-provided equipment. The incident involved a four-year-old who had accidentally drowned at a community pool. After two to four minutes of compressions without successful return of circulation, Emma helped to save life with her Big Easy mask. For those of you that don't know, that is the mask that you'll sometimes see when individuals are utilizing or doing CPR for resuscitation. This is a powerful reminder of how your investment in youth truly saves lives. Emma has been a Thornton lifeguard for three years, from age of 15 to 18. She's going on to college next. So she did learn these skills through the training with our city as well as the equipment that helped save that four-year-old. So on behalf of our entire community, thank you, Emma Farina, for acting with courage and skill when it matters most. That's all.
Mayor Potembegalo?
Thank you so much. I don't have too much tonight. I've been traveling with my family, luckily enough, and had some great family time. I appreciate being able to do so. But I did want to take a couple of seconds just to say thank you to our place and fire for an amazing National Night Out. As you know, it's one of our favorite nights, as well as our, our residents' favorite nights, and couldn't have been better. I really appreciate it. I also want to thank our police department for really swift action when it came to the double shooting in the Haven. I can't tell you how well it was handled and the residents have been talking about it and they were very appreciative of the swift response. So thank you very much. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to Tashco and the special committee that put together the event this weekend. I think everybody's looking forward to that being an annual event, but you knocked it out of the park. So thank you so much.
Thank you. So a few comments from me. The city is actively recruiting for a few
The city is actively recruiting for a few regular positions such as an aquatic specialist, CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Coordinator, and a landscape reviewer and inspector. We also have several temporary Parks and Rec positions available. You can visit our website at www.thortonco.gov for additional information regarding all of our open positions. Or you can sign up for a job alert and you can follow us on Facebook and LinkedIn. The city is also currently advertising for the Environmental Sustainability Task Force and the deadline to apply is August 28th at 5:00 PM. And thank you to all of council. As we've seen, it's been a very busy and exciting few weeks in our city and across our region. I had the honor of meeting Jenny Lee. She is the champion of the Annika Women's All Pro Golf Tournament. It was held right here in Todd Creek at the golf course. And it was a great moment, not just for the sport, but for showcasing our city as a destination for these kinds of events. And a huge thank you to the Todd Creek residents who came out in force to cheer on these women from across the country, some even opening their homes to house them while they competed. It was a great way to show off the Thornton way to the rest of the country. We also had a fantastic National Night Out. I visited several neighborhoods across the city and met so many great families and community members. And yes, I even attempted to dunk a cop. Officer Oriano was a very good sport and allowed me to throw a pitch to try to dunk her. I purposely missed, of course I purposely missed, but the chief took care of it. And in his first hit, he got her right in the dunk tank. At the Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting, we had a meeting hosted by the Denver Zoo Conservation Alliance where we covered serious and very timely topics, including updates to the Wildland Urban Interface Code. This is a direct response to what happened with the Marshall fires not too long ago. And a detailed briefing from the Regional Air Quality Council on our non-attainment areas and how we can better tackle air quality challenges together. And as a bonus, we got a behind the scenes tour of an exhibit. So I chose to check out the tigers and I can confirm they are just as amazing up close as they are from far away, but I would recommend staying far away. This morning, I had the joy of visiting North Star Elementary School to help kick off the first day for their kindergarten through fifth grade classes. And I was honored to lead the Pledge of Allegiance with them. It was an incredible, bright reminder of why we do this work. Their energy and excitement is contagious. And finally, I joined the Colorado Chamber of Commerce luncheon today where all eight members of our congressional delegation spoke about bipartisan efforts at the federal level, which I know is crazy. Nobody sees bipartisan efforts, but that was the theme of the conversation today. It's encouraging to see this kind of unity and collaboration, especially when it comes for advocating for Colorado. So thank you to everyone who made our city events possible. It's been an amazing few weeks. We have lots of leadership, lots of momentum, lots of great things happening across our city. And thank you to those that came to public comment, especially those that took the time to respectfully dialogue with us this evening. So with that, I'm going to move on to item 11, which is staff reports. Item 11A is the Police Department Public Safety Report. And I'll turn it over to Chief Jim Baird to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Portem and council for giving me a few minutes just to update you on a little, a few public safety items. This is my 11-week anniversary with the city. And going through National Night Out, I can tell you that Thornton really, really does do it well, put both of my prior jurisdictions to shame. So a couple of items here. So this is a, this, this, although it highlights Q1 through 4 in 2024 and then 1 and 2 in 2025, in law enforcement, we tend to try and track like to like. So you'll see that Q2 of 2024 is, is highlighted as is the Q2, which is what this report is in 2025. You'll see that without exception, the five crimes that are listed there are either flat in the case of homicide or are down in, in every other category. You see the clearance rates, response times and mental health holds, those are, those are very much just holding steady or improving as well. One of the things that happened under the leadership of interim Chief Reeves is that he fully staffed our traffic unit in 2025. So beginning in January, that unit was fully staffed and you can see the results of that on this traffic centric slide. But also in addition to that, I think that has a direct impact on the crime stats from the previous slide as well. For traffic stops, you can see that if you compare Q2 to Q2, that those are up 3,400 traffic stops. Speeding citations and registration citations have both essentially doubled if you compare the two quarters. And then DUIs are up a little bit as well. A little bit on a Vision Zero mid-year update. So this isn't based on the quarter. This is just where we are for the, for the entire first six months. So what we see here, we've had 19 total reported accidents and these are the ones that involve either serious bodily injury or unfortunately in five cases fatalities. So of the 19, five were fatal. And then we had 14 with SBI only. Six crashes involved DUI as a factor. Three of those also unfortunately were fatal. We had six crashes involving a motorcycle, one of which was fatal. And 12 crashes were at an intersection and related to stoplights. You may recall that we have the pilot program coming up for the stoplight, the, the camera systems, those will be installed 88th and Washington and then 120th in Colorado. We do believe that we will have those installed for the pilot program sometime in late fall, but I can update that as if the timeline moves at all. A few areas that were identified for safety improvements, Colorado and 115th evaluate for blinking yellow arrow, Colorado and Summit Grove, street lighting, Colorado 120th, update the yellow and red signal timing. And then East 104th at Washington, traffic signal and curb extension, that is currently under design. And then the 88th Avenue and Huron Street evaluating, adding additional streetlights and completing the study of the 88th Avenue corridor. 12 of the crashes had no identifiable engineering or enforcement solutions. They were just related to an outfall driver, reckless driving DUI or some other outside Brief update on a couple of projects, one new and one that's been a historical part of the, of the agency's history. One is the Blue Envelope Program. This is a new collaboration that we have with the Thornton Fire Department, the Adams County Sheriff's Office. It's a community focused initiative designed to promote just calm and informed communications during traffic stops. It's designed specifically to support individuals with autism or other neurodiverse conditions that can make communications in a time of crisis more challenging with first responders. And we do, if you go to our website, you can see the different locations to pick up a blue envelope. These, it's a project that started in Connecticut in 2020 and it's kind of been working its way across the country. It's very positive. Happy to be a part of it. And then, as is always, has already been stated, the importance of just collaboration with the community and just that relationship building. I wanted to highlight the Thornton Police Youth Academy. This year, we had 43 local youth attend the 2025 Academy. This is a program that starts shortly after school gets out and they have the, the youth services unit, two of which are sitting in here with you today and a third is in the hallway. They, they take the kids and they have them kind of go through a little mini police academy and learn different aspects of the job and tended to build trust. But really what I saw with the relationship that these school resource officers have with these kids, this is just building on an already incredibly strong relationship. I was incredibly impressed just to see in that short amount of time. We had a graduation ceremony in this room and just the enthusiasm that, that the, the officers have for the students and vice versa was, was really heartwarming. So a few, you can see a few of the things that they saw there. And I wanted to highlight one thing here as you can see, this is the graduating class. Like I said, there was 43 of them and I think there was only three or four male students in the class. The entirety of the rest of this, of them was, were female students and they just could not have been more engaged. And you know, hopefully at some point, one of them will be maybe sitting in the corners over here or standing up here at the podium for a quarterly update. That's all that I had, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Ayala?
Hi, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I was wondering, it seems like there's been a few different situations with DUIs recently. And I've had a few residents ask if there's going to be any more like checkpoints like there used to be quite a few years ago, or if there would be any type of like concentration or task force on DUI enforcement coming up anytime soon. And the second question I have is the Blue Envelope Program, is that only for people who are in a car with a traffic stop? Or could they be, also be used for just folks with maybe autism or communication impairment to utilize as like something to keep on themselves to contact, to use in contact with law enforcement?
Yeah, I'll go backwards. So for that question, it was certainly intended to be traffic stop centric at first, but I think that that would be totally fine to use it in other circumstances as well. Law enforcement is, is being trained in just the, the concept as a whole, regardless of the nature of the interaction.
Okay.
And on the DUI piece, we are looking at different staffing models just to see what we can do to leverage those, some of the, if you saw some of the crashes that we talked about, as the fatal ones did have alcohol as a factor. So we're constantly looking for different ways to bolster our enforcement efforts. Some of those will be located within the Thornton Police Department, but we're also working with our, our neighboring jurisdictions as well to see if we can do projects together. But that's something that we were always looking at and will continue to do so. I can update you more if we get something specific.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you, Chief Baird, for your presentation. The youth academy, is that the same as the explorers program? Are they different programs?
It's different. The explorers did play a role in it, in helping. And it's my understanding, Sergeant can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe a lot of the explorers had previously been through the youth academy. He's nodding his head, so.
So the explorer program is a more intense program?
And longer term. This was a one.
Longer term.
Yeah, this is a one-week commitment that the students are making shortly after summer starts. But the explorers, they play an active role for us and kind of in a volunteer capacity as well.
Great. Well, thank you for running these programs and looking forward to seeing those kids in the explorer program.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Russell?
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation and the information on the blue envelope. One thing that I will share, my wife does, is a nurse with home healthcare and works with adults with disabilities. And coincidentally, simultaneously, right as the city started talking about it, she started talking about it with our company and has taken it to various other states like Texas and where the company operates. With that being said, one thing, I don't know if it's something that you're pursuing, but perhaps partnering or looking to work with a lot of those other organizations that pay for the nurses to do the home healthcare. She's been able to have a lot of success within her company, but I know there's dozens of companies that provide the home healthcare. So as you continue to expand the program and get a greater reach between yourself and the fire department, that might be an angle to help expand it in, in our opinion. And so that was something I just wanted to share, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's a wonderful suggestion.
Any additional questions or comments from council?
I'll just say thank you very much. I have seen the increase in the tickets for speeding. It's, it's a double edged sword. It's the biggest complaint we get in the city is so many people are speeding and then we start to enforce and it's the biggest complaint we get is everybody's getting a ticket. So I would rather slow people down and give them a ticket than have to worry about someone getting hurt because of speeding unnecessarily. So thank you for the work that you all are doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Item 11B is the Fire Department Public Safety Report. I'll turn this over to Chief Stephen Kelly to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Portem, members of council. I'll be giving the second quarter public safety report for the fire department. All right. Just to start out, this table, which you've seen a number of times before, looks at our overall call volume in a number of areas and in the districts, in the different districts in the city. Starting out, we're looking at our total call volume and this is all calls that we responded to in the second quarter. That was 4,342 calls. That's broken down to 58 fire incidents, just over 3,000 medical calls and just over 1,200 other calls, which includes fire alarms, hazardous materials calls and other service type calls. One thing to note, we are down about 2% from the prior quarter, but when you look back at the second quarter of 2024, we're seeing an increase of about 6% in total calls. I'll focus a little bit on the fire calls and talk about that breakdown. Out of the 58 calls, we saw 22 structured fire calls in the second quarter, 10 vehicle fires, eight vegetation fires and 18 other types of fire calls. The 22 structured fires, we contain those to the room of continent, the room of origin or smaller approximately 82% of the time. On the vegetation fires, the prior quarter, second quarter of 2024, we had twice that number of vegetation fires and that speaks to just the general weather conditions that we've been experiencing here in the front range. Although, as Councilmember Salazar mentioned earlier, we continue to see very dry conditions as well. When we look at the districts overall, we see our highest call volume in districts one, two and three, and then lower volumes on districts four through eight. On this next slide, we look at the overall call volume, call volume by apparatus. When we look across our engines and medic units, I've mentioned this before, we're looking at a threshold, threshold of about 1,000 calls per quarter that causes us to have sort of additional caution on workload for the individual apparatus. None of our apparatus are reaching that threshold. And shortly here, you're going to be seeing Engine 78 on this roster. Next, we look at our response times and this is by first unit and by medic unit. We're looking for a 90% compliance at 5 minutes and 45 seconds for a first unit travel time. And we're looking at eight minute, eight minutes, 90% of the time for our medic units. And you can see we're hitting nine, above 90% on almost all districts except for District 8, and that's been very consistent. That will be changing once Station 8 opens later this year. And we also saw a little decrease in our first unit response travel time in District 6. Again, as we open another apparatus on that northeast corner of the city, I expect those numbers to improve as well. I'm going to highlight a couple of significant incidents from technically not the second quarter, but it's close enough to it, I figured I would highlight them tonight. We deployed three of our personnel to Carville, Texas on July 7th. They're members of Colorado Task Force 1, which is one of 28 FEMA Urban Search and Rescue Teams that deploy to major incidents around the country. They were there for 20 days supporting recovery from the floods and conducting operations. Around that exact same time, we deployed our Type 6 engine, which is, we have two of them, to the South Rim Fire in Montrose. It's in the, still burning in the Black Canyon at the Gunnison. And they've returned from that assignment. And like I said earlier, we are seeing a lot of fire activity on the western slope. We're not seeing the same type of fire activity here, but there is certainly a drawdown of resources towards that western, towards western Colorado, and that does impact our ability to respond here as well. So for the public, always keep that in mind that we are in a very dry environment and even though we're not seeing high winds or high fire activity here, it's a risk we're constantly facing. I'm going to call out three of our people. Captain Perry Otero, who leads our Honor Guard, traveled as a bagpiper to Coeur d'Alene, Idaho for, there was a, two firefighters were killed in the line of duty early in July and he participated in that memorial. Captain Bailey and Captain Hebert were instrumental in us receiving a piece of steel from the World Trade Center. We met with FDNY a week ago and they drove that steel back here to be part of our memorial at Station 1. And we'll be unveiling that at a 9/11 ceremony on 9/11 and you'll be getting information on that from myself and Chief Baird very shortly this week to add to your calendars. Then lastly, we have a graduation coming up. We have 26 fire recruits that are completing a long academy. They've been in academy since January and they graduate on September 13th. And they'll be hired to staff Station Number 8. So exciting time for the fire department with that aspect. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Unrain?
Chief, out of the 26 people that are coming out of the academy, we're going to be able to work on implementing or completing our four man engine crews?
That is correct. That is also part of that staffing.
Good. And then the rest of them are training to go over to Station 8? And then the rest of them are training to go over to Station Eight?
Correct, they will be filling the positions as we move other personnel around.
Shoot, any completion dates you want to speculate with on Station Eight?
I can speculate, so we are, we will be opening Engine Eight in the, early in the fourth quarter. The station is targeting completion towards the end of the year. There may be a few weeks, I don't want to commit to any date, but there may be a few week buffer each direction depending on how construction goes and weather impacts in the fall and winter, so end of year, beginning of next year, that station will be open. But the engine will be staffed and responding at a Station Six in the fourth quarter.
Thanks for my anxiety, thanks very much.
We had the Station Seven on the coldest day of the year, so we should do the same for Station Eight.
I can, we can look for that date.
Mayor Proton Bigelow?
I just want to say thank you so much to you and the entire fire department, and I really especially want to thank everyone that went out to Texas and helped with that situation. We really appreciate the fact that our staff is willing and able to do that, and it's so important, so thank you very much.
Very much appreciate, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? I'll just add one thing on the Honor Guard, this is for PD and for fire. I don't think people realize how valuable that service is. I had a family friend pass away, who was a detective in the Shreveport County Sheriff's Office in Louisiana, and because he, when he passed away, the police departments from the entire area and the fire departments from the entire area came out for the Honor Guard ceremony. And it meant so much to his friends and family to have them there. It's an incredible service, and it's so hard for them to do it because that's their brother or sister, but it's a very needed service, and so a huge thank you to both PD and fire for participating in that. All right, I think we can move on to item 12, which is the consent calendar. Is there any member of council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Councilmember Salazar?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item 12E from the consent calendar.
All right, so the motion is, well, we will be moving 12E from the consent calendar, it will now become 13E on the action item list. Is there any additional changes to the consent calendar? All right, is our motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, approval of the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please read the appropriate titles into the record and poll the council.
An ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the City of Thornton, Colorado, proposed amendments to Section 4.3 of the Thornton City Charter to provide that a partial term of office of less than two years served as a council member or mayor does not count as a term in office for purposes of term limits provided in the Colorado Constitution. An ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the City of Thornton, Colorado, proposed amendments to Section 4.5A, the Thornton City Charter to fill mayoral vacancies by special election when more than one year in the term remains. An ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the Thornton, of the City of Thornton, Colorado, proposed amendments to Section 8.13A and 8.16A of Thornton City Charter to increase timeframes to gather signatures on initiative and referendum petitions. Councilmember Salazar, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Acunto?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bigelow?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13 is action items. Item 13A is an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 18 of the Thornton City Code, adopting a new official zoning map for the city, and repealing ordinance 2399. I'll turn this over to Karen Wodomski, Long Range Planning Manager, to present this item.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm Karen Wodomski, Long Range Planning Manager for the City of Thornton, and tonight I am here to present for council's consideration the second reading of an ordinance that will result in a brand-new development code for the city. So more specifically, this ordinance has three components to it. The first would be to repeal and reenact the development code. That's Chapter 18 of the Thornton City Code, and it is the part of the code that regulates all the land use restrictions for the city in terms of how the city develops. The second part of the ordinance is to adopt a new official zoning map for the city. In the new development code, we have updated the names of some of the zoning districts, and so just to make sure that those align with the zoning map, we want to amend that zoning map. I just want to note that we're not rezoning any properties in the city, it's simply just updating the names in the zoning map. And then the third aspect, excuse me, of this ordinance is to repeal an old 1996 ordinance that has some standards that weren't incorporated into the development code, and those standards now conflict with the standards that we're proposing in the new development code. So we have to repeal not just Chapter 18, but also repeal this ordinance to ensure that we don't have any conflicts out there as we move forward with the code. This is a pretty short presentation, so really the main thing I want to focus on is just simply to make council aware of two corrections that we have made to the ordinance, so I'll be mainly focusing on that in the presentation. So city, the first reading of the ordinance was heard by city council on July 22nd, 2025, at a public hearing, and at that public hearing, city council did vote in favor of approving the ordinance. Since the first reading, as I mentioned, we have made two corrections to the ordinance language since the first reading, and those two corrections are really regarding how applications will be processed under the existing versus the new code. Those changes were made to the actual ordinance language, so that they don't impact the actual development code, they're not changes to the development code itself. So correction number one is a pretty simple date typo fix, and that is related to the deadline for when resubmissions of applications that can be submitted until they're subject to the regulations of the new development code. So as you can see in bullet point two there in the red text, we had to change the date from February 12th, 2025, to February 12th, 2026. And then the second change that we made was just to clarify the process for conceptual site plans. Conceptual site plans are being changed to what's called preliminary plans in the new development code, and these are existing applications that will continue to have to be amended in the future. But if that occurs, they're actually, for the most part, going to be processed as new preliminary plans, but not amendments to preliminary plans. So we felt that this clause was a little bit misleading, and there is also a process in which preliminary, I'm sorry, conceptual site plans could be amended as a minor amendment administratively. So because there's kind of various ways in which this can be amended, we felt that it was most clear to applicants to just simply indicate the section number of the code, which describes exactly what the circumstance is and exactly what the process is for that amendment. That's really the gist of my presentation, so in terms of staff's recommendation, we do recommend approval of the ordinance as corrected to repeal and reenact the development code, adopt a new official zoning map for the city, and also repeal ordinance 2399. The new development code would take effect on September 1st, and at this time, I'm done with my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council? Hearing none. Councilmember Martinez, would you please introduce item 13A for second reading?
Yes, I'd like to introduce an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 18 of the Thornton City Code, adopting a new official zoning map for the city, and repealing ordinance 2399, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, approval of the ordinance on second reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Acunto?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala? Mayor Proton Bigelow?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13B is an ordinance amending the city code to update references and terminology related to the reenactment of Chapter 18, and to relocate blighted property rehabilitation regulations formerly in Chapter 18 to Chapter 38, Article 10. I'll turn this over to Martin Postma, our principal planner, to present this item.
Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton and City Council. The ordinance presented to you at this time is intended to be enacted concurrently with the reenacted redevelopment code that you just approved on September 1st. It serves two purposes. First, it updates the text in other parts of the city code which refer to the development code. This is being done to ensure continuity of references and terms throughout the code. Second, it places blight language, which has been in Chapter 18, into Chapter 38. This is more appropriate because it better aligns with the property maintenance codes in Chapter 38 than it does with the development codes that are in Chapter 18. Please note that this ordinance makes adjustments to the city code, it does not make any changes to the policy, it is for cleanup purposes only. The agenda for this evening is to provide you with the purposes of the changes, which I just covered, provide some context for those changes, followed by a few examples, additional information about the blight language placement, and of course, the staff recommendation. Context. The major update to the development code includes many changes, including the titles of zoning districts, the placement of various sections, and the naming of processes. These things are mentioned in other chapters of the code as well, and for that reason, updates to these other chapters are appropriate to maintain consistency and clarity throughout the code document. Next, we'll have some examples. The first, Chapter 10 references Section 18-556 pertaining to the maintenance of weeds. The newly enacted Chapter 18 changes the location of this reference to 18619. The ordinance presented to you changes that and corrects it. The second example is in regard to land use terms. Chapter 38, for example, mentions housing types such as single-family attached town homes and apartments. The new Chapter 18 updates these items to detached dwelling units, attached dwelling units, and multi-unit buildings. The ordinance changes those land use references as well. And finally, the third example is in regard to terminology. A key part of the development review process has been called the conceptual site plan. The new Chapter 18 now calls them preliminary plans. Conceptual site plans are referenced in Chapter 66. This ordinance changes that reference to preliminary plans to ensure consistency. And the blight language. This ordinance places language regarding blight, which was formerly in 18, to Chapter 38. The relocated language addresses the causes of blight and the blighted, and blighted property rehabilitation. It's being relocated to Chapter 38 because it is more properly affiliated with property maintenance codes in that chapter than development codes in Chapter 18. Again, this language is being relocated, it is not being changed. Staff's recommendation in regard to this ordinance is for its approval, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from council? All right, hearing none. Councilmember Ayala, would you please introduce item 13B?
I'd like to introduce an ordinance amending the city code to update references and terminology related to the reenactment of Chapter 18, and to relocate blighted property and rehabilitation regulations formerly in Chapter 18 to Chapter 38, Article 10, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you, approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
No, thank you.
Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Acunto?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bigelow?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13C is an ordinance amending ordinances 3712, 3713, and 3714, revising definitions and updating certain other references as required by changes to the Thornton City Code, Chapter 18, development code repeal and reenactment. And I'll turn this over to Kim Newhart, my name is Director, to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. You heard Karen and Martin both talk about terminology from Chapter 18 development code updates. This is the same thing, we have three rate and fee ordinances, one for water, one for sewer and trash, and then the third one for stormwater. In each of those ordinances, we talk about the terminology for single-family, multifamily, duplex, and mixed use. So basically, all we're doing is updating that to tie back to the Chapter 18 new terminology. And if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Councilmember Ayala, would you please introduce item 13C?
Yes, an ordinance amending, I'd like to introduce an ordinance amending ordinances 3712, 3713, and 3714, revising definitions and updating certain other references required by changes to the Thornton City Code, Chapter 18, development code, repeal and reenactment, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you, approval of the ordinance on first reading has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
No, not today, thank you.
Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bigelow?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Acunto?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13D is a resolution repealing, Resolution CD Number 2024-227, and attachments as amended and enacting a new resolution, and attachments 1 through 13 effective September 1st, 2025. Turn this over to Erica Senna, our Budget and Operations Director, to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton and council. So tonight, I'm bringing forward a recommendation to update the fee resolution based on prior discussions with council related to the development code update, stormwater quality regulations and permits, and movement of utility reinspection fees from the utility rate ordinance to the fee resolution. These were presented to council on June 3rd, July 15th, July 22nd, and at tonight's public hearing on stormwater and floodplain regulations. We recommend approval of the new fee resolution and are happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions from council? All right, hearing none. Councilmember Russell, would you please introduce item 13D?
Yes, I'd like to introduce a resolution repealing, a resolution repealing Resolution CD Number 2024-227, and attachments as amended, and enacting a new resolution, and attachments 1 through 13 effective September 1st, 2025, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Thank you, approval of the resolution has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
None.
Hearing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Mayor Proton Bigelow?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Acunto?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 13E is what was previously item 12E from the consent calendar, which is an ordinance submitting to the registered electors of the City of Thornton, Colorado, proposed amendments to certain sections of the Thornton City Charter to eliminate superfluous, obsolete, outdated, and ambiguous language, clarifying the applicability of anti-nepotism provisions, clarify authority relating to intergovernmental agreements and revocable permits, clarify provisions related to budget procedures and control, correct grammar in citations, conform to changes in the law, and make other non-substantive provisions. I will turn it over to Councilmember Salazar.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance restoring the deleted language in Section 5.9B that states "and shall be responsible solely to the council." Second. And I ask for its immediate approval. Second.
Thank you, it has, the motion has been made and seconded, and this is to revert to the original language in Section 5B, correct? 5.9B, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Nope, I just want to return to its original language.
All right, would you please poll the council?
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Russell?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Unrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Acunto?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayala?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item 14 is adjournment, and hearing no further business, we are now adjourned at 9:31 PM. Thank you.